Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for April 8th, 2014. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, which is a symbol of perfect interconnection among the united cultures.
First item on the agenda is to approve the work session agenda. So any changes need to come?
Move to approve.
Second. It's a motion of pro second to approve the work session agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five say an aye. Our motion passes. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 13-01, we welcome the public to attend the county work session. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. Review March 13th, 2014's regular meeting agenda. John, you want to do that?
Please, Chairman, Commissioners. Start off the meeting with the financial reports. You have the expenditure report. And in front of you, there's $1,808,982. This is the... Some of the major items are like we have our Presbyterian healthcare, those are payments for our employees' health insurance, it's $144,000. We've got our payments to the PERH, which is the employee's retirement. Those are $61,000 each pay. We've got a couple payrolls into this one. The rest of the items are mainly the smaller items. As we're finishing up the smaller projects, the construction projects, we're getting down to the end of them. We've wrapped up the sewer system in North Hurley. All we're waiting for is those ponds to dry out so then we can finish that project to muck out the ponds and reclaim that area to cover it up. And so that finishes that project and it'll be completely done for those residents. They're already all on the new sewer system and being sent into the Tri-City wastewater treatment facility. We just have to wait until the ponds dry out and then clean that up. Same situation Tyrone Townsite is in right now with their sewer project that they did to get off of their lagoons. We've finished up basically the front of our building like we've seen. We're now waiting to get that legislative appropriation so we can get that project going. The Cliff Fairgrounds, Kevin, our architect, Mr. Robinson, has been working on the... Talking with the state on the sewer system out there to... Because at first by regulations it was going to require a large system as though we continually used those fairgrounds and those restrooms. We've been able to reduce that, so I think we've gotten to where we need to be. So now we'll sit down and figure out the final contract on that and get that project going. I know we've had some concerns from people that have rented the facility to use inside the facility. As we go forward, most of our construction is going to be on the outside of the facility. It's in addition to the building, not doing things inside. Really, all we'll do inside is making a couple new doorways and things like that in the building, so it shouldn't affect anybody that's rented the facility to use. And we'll make sure the contractor realizes and they're not storing equipment inside the building. They have storage somewhere else because we do have that rented as we get closer to graduations and in the summer grazing events for the 4-H and different things like that. The sheriff's vault project should be getting going, and so you're going to see those expenditures come on. They're not in here right now. We've just got some smaller for the drawings, things like that. That one, I believe the drawings, the preliminary drawings are done, so we'll get that to you so you can look at it. And then we'll get with the sheriff's office and make sure it fits their needs. So that's kind of where we're at. As we get closer to the end of the year, we start to spend the grants and that down, that's why our expenditures go up some from where they usually are. And we have almost a full month in there. We didn't have the last meetings, so that's why the expenditures are running. The next is the financial reports. As of the end of February, we will at the next meeting have the March ones. We have to wait until about the middle of the month. The treasurer's not allowed to do the distribution until the 15th of the month, and we have to wait till he does his distribution to get our tax numbers. So at the next meeting we'll have March, that's why we only have February here. We start off the year for the general fund, July 1st, 2013, at $2,451,424. Year-to-date revenues of $6,271,750. Year-to-date transfers of $39,279. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $2,354,584. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $4,7,538. Leaves a cash balance at February 28th of $2,321,773. With projected transfers, expenditures, and revenues through June 30th, 2014 of $360,894. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $2,682,622. Less the reserve of $2,105,342. Leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014 of $577,280. We go to page two is the budgeted revenues. We've currently collected 59.85% of the budgeted revenues as of February 28th. On the next is the transfers. We've done 2.98% of budgeted transfers so far this year. The next page is the road department. We started the year July 1st, 2013 at $267,657. Year-to-date revenues of $416,470. Operating expenditures of $195,891. Salaries and benefits of $829,568. Leaves a cash balance at February 28th of a negative $341,333. With projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $481,470. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $140,137. Less the required reserve of $130,935. Leaves a surplus of $9,202. The next is the corrections fund. Cash balances of July 1st, 2013 is $407. Year-to-date revenues of $587,213. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $522,625. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $1,281,002. Leaves a cash balance at February 28th, 2014 of a negative $1,216,007. With projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014 of a positive Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $19,226. There's no required reserve in the corrections fund. And once again, as I've stated before, the reason why we go negatives now is we don't do those transfers until later. And so we transfer money from the general fund to make up whatever revenues those departments don't receive. So we will do those transfers. Now we go to new business. I wanted to add, we're recognizing the state champion wrestlers, but we wanted to add an item that the... Our road department superintendent, Mr. Moore, his son has competed again in the basketball, and he has came up second in the regionals. He's won state three times, won districts.
Won district three times, state twice, and runner-up twice.
Runner-up in regionals twice. Miss going on to nationals this year by one point. So wanted to recognize him for all his accomplishments that he's done. So we were going to put him at the top since we're going to pull him out of schools with the wrestlers so that we can get him back into school.
So you're just going to make that a new line item?
A new line item under new business.
Have the school been contacting him?
Yes, the schools have been contacting. So we were just going to add that as a new business line item there at the top. So the kids are first and we can get them in and get them back out. Then we'll go on to recognize the state champion wrestlers in cobray and silver area. We've recognized them. You have in your packet the winners in their weight classes. And they should be here as everything we know so far. They'll be here to receive something from the commission, the recognition. Next is approve/disapprove any into agreement with Hazier... Oh, no, sorry. Presentation from the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber Report on Tourism Fulfillment Second Quarter. This was going to be on the last meeting. They chose to pull it off. They're going to just come and give you some stats on what they've been doing. We've had an agreement with them that for this last year that's coming up to an end to do fulfillment as part of the lodgers tax group. They pay them. We used to do it through the regular chamber of commerce and then it switched over to the green chamber a couple years ago. And so now that the chamber's back, we'll look at where do we do the fulfillment in the coming years. But this is a report on what they've done.
Well, I personally think that since we have our chamber back, I think we need to continue with our Grant County Chamber of Commerce and fund them if we're going to fund anyone.
So, yeah, and we'll be in discussions with them. I've talked a little bit with Mr. Terry already on it, and so we'll sit down and talk and bring it to the commission as we go forward with our budgets that we're starting. The next is to enter into an agreement with Hazier for the Grant County Emergency Operations Plan. This is Mr. Hilton as our emergency manager, is working to put together a new emergency operations plan to up to, to, I guess, to bring ours up to date that we already have. This is a group that's been working throughout the state doing them. It's gone through our purchasing office. It's under the $50,000 for professional service, so we don't have to go out for bid. We can go ahead and use them. And so this is the agreement to come in front of the commission to go ahead and go into an agreement with them and work with them on doing this plan for the emergency operation plan. And it's an all-county emergency operation plan. We incorporate anything the buses have or the other fire departments are all incorporated into this plan, so it's a very good document. The next item is we have two people that are on our lodgers tax committee that wish to be reappointed. Their terms are up. That would be Becky O'Connor and John Rolovek.
Let me have one more.
This is Becky.
From Becky, we have Becky.
All right, we'll see where that other letter went to. They're up, their terms are up, they're currently on it, they wish to be reappointed. They're doing a pretty good job. Becky is, yeah, Becky's kind of taking the lead on it. The commissioners at the last opening pointed Mr. Terry on there, and I think we've got a really strong lodgers tax committee now. And so if they want to re-serve again on it, I think it's worthwhile to reappoint those individuals. And we'll get to that other letter. The next item is approve or disapprove of Grant County Sheriff's Department policy physical fitness. The sheriff's office has had a policy for physical fitness since 2009 is when this policy was, current policy wasn't enacted. It allows our officers to take time during the day to work out, to stay in shape because of the demands of their job. And what the sheriff has come and asked is that originally, the original policy really got, it had some stipulations in there to follow some criteria that we weren't really following. It was a former officer that wrote the policy, was a certified trainer under this group, and so we followed their standards. And so we followed their standards. So it removes that, those types of testing and different things they have to do. And it also removes that it did not cover the probationary employees in that department before. And so if somebody was a probationary employee, they weren't allowed to take advantage of this policy and get in shape and stay in shape for their job.
Does it cover old men?
If you work in the sheriff's office as a deputy, it will cover, as a law enforcement officer, it would cover you.
No running free.
So that's the major changes to it. I don't know, Kevin, you want to add anything? I just kind of breezed across the top.
The main issue was it was based on Cooper Institute, and all the guidelines for Cooper Institute were taken out. And that's mainly the biggest parts of that because we didn't have a trainer or certified instructor that could follow the guidelines of Cooper Institute.
The next item is the 2015 fiscal year county administered fire fund distribution. We've received the letters for our different fire departments, the funding they will get. You have Grant County, the first one, it says Grant for $55,501, that is for the fire management officer. He receives as though he's a station with an average ISO of all of our volunteer fire departments. The next is the Cliff Gila, and they receive $78,116. Next is Fort Baird, and they are at $55,501, which this has them as an ISO of seven, which they just recently got a new inspection and they dropped to a five. So they are rated an ISO the same as Towne and Silver City's fire department now. So our volunteers are, have the same ISO rating as Towne and Silver City, one of our departments. And they're working with the other departments. Randy's been working with them to try and drop the ISOs of all the departments as they get their inspections. The next station is Whiskey Creek, coming up for their inspection. But Fort Baird was, did an excellent job, dropped two ISO ratings. Next is Lower Membras for $78,116. We have the PA volunteer fire department, they get $196,307. Santa Rita is $55,501. Sapiro Creek is $52,418. Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department is our largest, $292,920 because of all the main stations that they have. Upper Membras is $78,116. And Whiskey Creek is $111,002. And so these are their fire fund distribution monies that will come down to the county deposited by each, into each station that they can use to buy equipment, use for training. They can't purchase food unless it's exhaustive training or they're on a fire for over eight hours, extended period, that's four, four hours enough. And so it's governed by state statutes, but this is the money that they've been buying their trucks out of when we come in front of the commission to build new stations. That's the money they use. The next item is the program work plan between USDA, WS, and Grant County for fiscal year 2015. This is an agreement that we have in place. Every year we do it, and it deals with predator control and damage control of animals and livestock. It's paid for out of the funds that are collected on the, that are assessed by the cost per head. They're FIF, FIF funds, I think is what they are. They're done, I think it's 50 cents a head for cattle now. And so that's what pays for this. It's not out of the general fund. It's $28,500 is what we pay to them each year to do. It's basically paying the equivalent of half of an officer, and the other half is paid by someone else to come down here and they work for credit with predator control. We've used them out at the airport when we're having problems with animals getting on the runways before we put up our big fence. They would bring out predators and set them up, the fake predators. They'd set up air cannons trying to drive the antelope and the deer away from our runways to the airplane so planes wouldn't hit them. So they've done a really good job. The next is we're getting into, I guess, our proclamation section. This meeting is all about proclamations. The first one is, Grant County is, or Silver City, Grant County is designated as a, trying to get a designation as a gateway community on the Continental Divide Trail. It'll be one of the first ones dedicated on there. It's supposed to bring in a lot of tourism to the area for that, and so the Towne and Silver City has already approved something saying that they recognize it and they want to support it, and that's what they've asked the commission to do a proclamation to support that, to get that designation for this area so we can bring in more tourists and more tourism to the area because of the Continental Divide Trail. We have the race.
Last week, week four, it was very interesting. Very interesting.
Yeah, it's a very good deal, and we already have the Continental Divide Race that comes through where they race all the way down to the Mexican border from, I forgot.
Well, somewhere.
Yeah, they race down to the well, I don't know where they start at the northern end, how high it is, but they race all the way through the continent, on the Continental Divide Trail down. There's several, it takes like, I think about 40 or 50 days.
They had that one from Canada. They had that one from Canada all the way down.
Yeah, so they've already got these guys racing. They do recently, and they're coordinating this event, I think with, they said there's some hikers that are going to hike and they're coming into the areas. They're trying to coordinate it all, so when those hikers that are hiking the trail come to town, this event will be happening, this celebration.
Is that something they're highly involved in it?
Yeah, it's very good. The next proclamation is declaring April 1st through April 30th as Grant County Trail Month. It's national trails. We did it last year, so that we're just working on trails and being, getting people out to use all the trails in the community that the local groups have worked on. Also, we have a proclamation to declare the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The commission does this each year. We understand the need to bring more awareness to the issue continues to grow, and we need to do everything we can to help.
We're going to wear Denise out.
Yeah. So she's going to have to, after she reads all these proclamations, she's going to take vacation.
Rest your voice.
She's going to wear her out. You guys are going to wear her out because she's going to have to go on vacation for a while. The next is the proclamation declaring the week of June 22nd through June 28th as cancer relay for life. The commission has done this each year to support all the work that that group does to bring awareness to cancer and try and help find a cure. Those are all the proclamations that I know of. The next is the first resolution is Resolution 14-11 Budget Adjustments. This is our, the budget adjustments where we set up some grant from the senior services, that adjustment that the commission has approved, the amendment to senior services grant. It also sets up some lodgers tax transfers, cash transfers, intergovernmental grants and capital projects. Sets up the revenue and expenditure piece of both of those. It's something we have to do as a resolution by state requirements. And all we're doing is trying to start preparing for the end of the year. We start moving money around to cover those grants where they're reimbursables until we get reimbursed those monies or the grants that come in at the end, like the adjustment received by the seniors. So Linda has it all detailed in there, the different amounts. They're not very large. The one though is to transfer out the 1.3 out of the general fund. It's just our normal transfers. The next resolution is authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, intercept agreement, buy-in between Grant County and New Mexico and the New Mexico Finance Authority. A limited obligation to Grant County to pay principal amount of $335,517 for the purpose of financing the cost of construction of a new office, bathroom, and meeting room in existing fire station for the use by the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. This is, the fire department's been working for quite some time to do an addition on to their main station at the Tyrone Townsite the last time they were inspected. It has a designation as a main station, but if they don't make improvements to add a meeting room and separate bathrooms to it, then they could lose that designation, which means funding to them. And so they've worked with, they were working with Mr. Redford, and he has since retired. And so Mr. Robinson has picked up the project and working with them. We've gone in front of the New Mexico Finance Authority and been approved for the loan. It'll be paid for out of their state fire funds, and they have the money that's needed to pay that with the other things they're paying out of their fire funds. The debt service schedule is okay. And so this is the final piece to execute all the documents so we can start to close on the loan. They've been reviewed by Ms. Robinson. I don't think there's any issues with them. It's the normal, it's the normal stuff that we get. And then the intercept agreement is a normal process for them where they intercept those monies straight from the state forestry before it comes down to us to pay off these loans, which this is where during legislative session, everybody was arguing they didn't want the state to intercept any money because they don't intercept money. And every loan we do, they intercept money, so I don't, it's not something new, so I didn't know what everybody's problem was with state intercepting. The next is approve/disapprove a resolution for Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Determination of Costs and Road Improvement and the county to construct. Dory, do you want to explain your four resolutions? There's this one, and then she has the next one, 414 is Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District, portion of the costs to be assessed. And then 1415 is the Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District filing of the assessment roll. And then 1416, the Viva Santa Rita Improvement District time and place for the Viva Santa Rita Improvement District Assessment Roll hearing. Take it away, Dory.
Good morning. How are you, Dory?
Good morning.
We're good.
Okay. There are four resolutions. These resolutions will enable the county to proceed with the assessment roll district. Thereafter, there'll be a notice of intent to adopt a, to adopt an ordinance to levy the assessments on the Viva Santa Rita Improvement District. Each one of these resolutions are necessary to proceed with the process. So I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Dory?
I'd just like to say thank you for all you do, Dory. I've talked to a lot of the residents out there at Viva Santa Rita, and they say you've been very pleasant to work with. And people don't know how much work you actually do when it comes, especially in this type of stuff. So we thank you very much and thank you for your knowledge.
That's very great. I don't care if it's just project or others, you're always there. Thank you for your work.
Well, let's pray by the grace of God.
That's right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, yes. Thank you, Dory.
I just want to point out, last resolution, we're going to have to pick some dates, right, Dory?
That's correct. The target date for the assessment roll hearing is the last one, number four, is May 20th, which is a Tuesday. The reason for the Tuesday is so that on the 22nd, which is your regular meeting, we would schedule for you what we call confirming the assessment roll, which means the residents have had their opportunity to object, and based on the hearing, we can move forward, but the county commissioners have to confirm the resolution so that, basically it's saying this is your cost and we will move forward to bill you. And the ordinance thereafter, I believe, will also be on May 22nd as a notice of intent to adopt. That one will levy the assessments. At that time when the ordinance does become effective, the levy is in place and liens are created on the properties until such time they are paid in full. We do have residents that want to pay upfront prior to any lien being filed, so we're proposing that the ordinance will have a grace period for those that want to pay in full before the county commissioners files a lien in the assess and clerk's office for the property. So we have a handful of people that do want to pay in full right upfront. Once you adopt the ordinance and you collect the first payment, the road department has to start the project within 60 days of that date.
Earl's glad to hear that.
It sounds like it'll be the end of June, Earl, or maybe early July.
So once you, once you do the intent to adopt in May, how many days after that do we actually adopt it, or is that?
I'm going to estimate 28 days because Abby knows. You have to...
June's going to be tight for meetings because of the annual conference, is why I was asking.
Is it 14 days?
I have a sense for adoption on June 12th is where we were putting out that meeting.
So it's not 30 days? That's why I was asking.
Usually when you adopt an ordinance, you just have to wait two weeks after you adopt the notice of resolution, no, the resolution of notice of intent. I think we have three weeks or something like that.
Notice to residents has to take place three weeks in advance. Notice to residents has to take place, uh, three weeks and a half.
We're good with that. When it's thirty, we may not be.
Yeah, no, we're good. So we're trying for June twelve.
So I just have one question, and after June twelve, then it is effective, correct? The ordinance?
That means Earl has till August twelfth to start.
Well, there's a thirty-day protest period with any ordinance. So, it becomes effective that there's a thirty-day protest period where people can come in and protest, and we never have had anybody protest an ordinance, so I couldn't tell you what happens.
That's why I estimated twenty-eight days, but once we see that first payment, uh, irregardless of, I think anyway, irregardless of the protest period, uh, the statute that says that we have to start the work within sixty days.
Yeah. I think it falls in line, 'cause it was getting-
If you're talking about accepting the first payment, that probably won't be until November next for a payment to actually be-
I have a resident-
It won't go on to the tax bills until probably the following-
No, 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 it's not a tax-
Are you gonna bill, you're gonna hold the tax-
I'll get billing.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and we have a resident that already wrote the check, he's just waiting to-
Yeah, we need to get it done, ask him that anyway, so.
So, this all falls in line with what Earl had mentioned before, is that he was looking at his June schedule to try and put this in, and so it's like falling in line with, with what he had talked about, and we've been in conversation with those people out there, um, in the subdivision, the residents, Mr. Moore's gone out and looked at the road form, done things, and we've talked with them, they're understanding and they're excited, that they're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel and won't have to deal with this anymore.
Me too. And the next one starts.
Okay, there's a few more of them.
Yeah. Okay, next group?
So, the next item we have is the, um, health plan claims. Um, we have the six hundred and thirty-six claims totaling a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents, and these are the in-county, used to be called the sole community provider, they're now called that Safety Net Healthcare Pool. Um, there's no out-of-county claims at this time, and then we have one indigent burial certificate for teratosis, um, they're allowed to recoup six hundred dollars of an indigent burial, and so they've submitted for that on that, and that's the two items. Um, I spoke with the hospital on the out-of-county claims, we haven't had any the last few times. Um, there was some confusion that, that they thought that the whole system changed, and we've informed them that no, that the indigent piece, which is the out-of-county claims, is still the way it was, um, that didn't go away, and so they're gonna start to submit those again in the future. They were just under the impression with Senate Bill two sixty-eight that it changed everything and took that away, and there wasn't any, and there was only that Safety Net Healthcare Pool, and I told them, no, it's not, um, so they're gonna, they're gonna start submitting that. We had the meeting with them a couple weeks ago, and they're gonna start submitting those, starting to let people know there still is that plan. We're also going to look at it, um, because of the way Senate Bill two sixty-eight worked, it actually gives us more money back for our indigent healthcare claims now, um, 'cause we used to have to send up eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, and now we only have to send up about four hundred and eighty thousand.
And we're always sending that up, right?
Well, we have to adopt an ordinance before July first, um, so we'll bring that-
That had an emergency clause on it.
Well, it has an emergency clause, but then in the language of the bill, it says you have to adopt the ordinance by July first and start sending the payments after July first. So the emergency clause, it was, the bill, that's, it's, it's a bad bill all the way around, because the emergency clause put it in effect, but didn't put any funding in effect until after July first. So, I don't know what the emergency clause did, it really didn't do anything.
Trade it crisis?
So, yeah, so, so it's in place, but we'll bring an ordinance in front of you that will say, and basically all the ordinance is gonna say is that the commission will send up the equivalent to one-twelfth of a gross receipts tax up to the state each fiscal year, and we send those payments, I can't remember if it's a monthly or quarterly basis.
Quarterly.
Quarterly, um, and we'll send them up to them, and it's equivalent based on the previous fiscal years, one-twelfth. So we, we figure out what our previous fiscal year's gross receipts was, calculate what one-twelfth or that would've been, and then send that up by ordinance, and so, that's, and that will fix that, so it actually frees us up almost four hundred thousand dollars to put towards local programs now, and I've talked to the hospital that we will look at the, the indigent care requirements and look at our resolution that we have, and there might be some things that the hospital's not getting funded for now, under the new plan, that we may be able to fund under the indigent to help some of those people that are uncompensated care as well for them. So we're, we're gonna work with them and try and keep them as whole as possible, uh, in this, as they go through going forward. And I think that's it, there's nothing else to add, I don't think, right, Demisha?
There might be some things to add.
Okay, so we're moving along, and we'll move into county reports, and I always like to start with Mike, 'cause he gives such a great report.
Mr. Chairman, council members, uh, find me after your permission for a moment of silence. I was informed this morning that the former mayor of Deming, Andreas Hill, passed away last night, so, um, if, if I could answer that permission, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members. I respectfully submit my report to the Grant County Detention Facility, um, for the month of March twelfth through April the eighth. Uh, item number one is the policy and procedures update. Um, the department held a meeting on April the third to discuss department policies, procedures, and protocols, and I'd like to thank John and Abby for facilitating that meeting, and thank you very much, it was very productive, thank you guys for taking the time to do that. Um, item number two, the detention facility update, um, we currently have three temporary vacancies, uh, the department has hired a new officer who will begin on, uh, April the fourteenth. A little information on facility's maintenance, train has come in and completed the required HVAC repairs, um, at the facility, including the purge and the exhaust system. Facility is currently replacing the faulty water heater that went out, and also we're replacing an electrical part that regulates the south door of the Sallyport, and those should, those repairs should be done, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, item number three is detention facility assessment. Um, on an update, the department has changed the shift schedule from twelve hours to eight hours, uh, recommended post-physician guidelines are being implemented, uh, the three permanent sergeants have been assigned to their respective shifts, and as of April the fourth, uh, the department personnel were fit-tested for their vest, um, and the vest will be partially funded through a grant, and this will be the first time that the department personnel have, um, been able to acquire the vest, so we're really excited and looking forward to that, and it's very much needed, uh, so. Um, item number four, the training update, Sergeant Galindo recently completed the field training curriculum for the, um, detention facility. I have it with me, if you'd like to look at it, um, it's quite lengthy, but it does, uh, facilitate all new hirees to acquire their forty hours, uh, upon, uh, right after they get hired, it'll be a month-long period. It's, uh, basically a three, uh, three-tiered training process, um, Sergeant Galindo will take the first section of it, and then he'll, then, uh, after they complete that, then they'll go to the field training officers for their actual practical, uh, training experiences. Um, after a month period, the new hirees, um, they'll, the, the field training officers will sign off on them, saying that they have completed that training, uh, if not, if any one of them do not, then we'll do some remedial training until, uh, we're completely satisfied that they have completed the training and they're ready to, uh, to start on their own in the facility. So this is a great step forward for, uh, training the new hirees and getting them in there, I think, hopefully it'll, it's gonna help with our retention, uh, rather than just putting somebody back there without any training and then, uh, you know, letting them know exactly what's going on back there, and it is a difficult position, it's a difficult job, so I think this will really help us with our retention. Um, he's completed that, uh, portion of our training program. Uh, officers will be required to stay in the program again for one month. Um, Sergeant Chris Lucero, uh, Lucero, uh, recently completed his training in the newly hired background investigations, and what we'll do is any new hirees, uh, we'll get Officer, Sergeant Lucero involved in that, and he can do some background, he brought back some information, um, that he learned over there, um, at the training school, and this is, uh, investiga- investigatory techniques, mandatory disclosure documents, which are required by the applicants, and something new that came to mind, and we wanna run this through Abby and through Renee, but, um, there's also some, um, areas that we can go into as far as the applicant social media, and, uh, so we'll get some information on the individuals prior to, uh, hiring or after they're hired, uh, we can also, um, access their accounts, and there is, uh, state statute on that that allows us to do that. Um, and, and we're doing this because of the security requirements over at the detention facility. Um, Officer Galindo, Lieutenant Aguirre, Sergeant Galindo, Officer Goikovich, Officer Rodriguez, and Officer Fisher are scheduled to attend the New Mexico Sheriff and Corrections Conference, they're up there right now in Albuquerque, and all of those officers, while they're up at the conference, will be able to acquire their forty hours, and what we're trying to do is schedule as much training as we can for all the officers, um, to get their forty hours of training, so we can chip away at that and make sure that they're all, um, certified and their training is up to date. Um, Sergeant Hardesty and Sergeant Lucero will attend their, uh, first-line supervision training in, in August. Item number five, uh, the inmate support program, we met yesterday with a group called, um, it's, uh, the New Mexico Works Intensive Care Management, or I-Care, and it's also a coins data management, um, group. Um, this organization contacted, uh, the subgroup for the inmate support system, and the purpose, uh, what they're doing is they're, uh, they have been funded through grants and, um, they're, they're coming down, and what they're doing is they're putting together statistical information which, um, pertains to employment and substance abuse for individuals who, um, who don't have the means of, uh, who do have a substance abuse problem, but, um, just, uh, you know, they can't acquire any employment, they can't acquire any other resources and services, and that pretty much touched base with what's happening with the inmates in the facility. So we met with them to see what their program is all about, um, we may, um, team up with them and their program and incorporate portions of, um, their program into the inmate support system, and most of all, we were looking for some funding avenues, which, Commissioner Hall, this may also help with, um, with the detox, and so that'll also help, and that was one of the other reasons that we wanted to look at this too. So, um, we met with them, uh, we've got some information, we'll take it back to the subgroup, and then we'll make a decision, uh, right now they're asking us for a support letter, and, um, so we're looking at that, and the only, uh, to me the only drawback was, um, they wanted to, um, start here, uh, it's not a drawback that it's here, but we, the inmate support program was designed for three counties, and, um, their pilot program right now is, uh, pretty much, um, specifies a, a local area, so, uh, we may look at that and see what we can do with that, and if, if it is that we start here, then we'll start here, and then hopefully this will spread to Hidalgo and Luna Counties and also Catlin County. Um, item number six, recognition award program, you've heard this name, I didn't put it in there, but I just got the information, um, Officer Narteta, for the third time, has been nominated again, uh, this man is phenomenal, uh, anytime that we need anything at the facility, uh, he never hesitates to, uh, to show up or be part of the facility or work whenever needed, so, um, his name was submitted again, so, uh, for the third time, Officer Narteta will be recognized, uh, as, uh, on our recognition award program. Detention statistics, um, the average daily population for the month of March twelfth through April eighth, uh, we have eighty inmates, six more than last month, um, high population males was sixty-seven, eight more than last month, uh, population females was fifteen, that remained the same. For the month of April, uh, there were eighty inmates, um, and that was six more than last month incarcerated in the facility. Uh, the monthly average arrest totals, again, Silver City Police Department had ninety-four, New Mexico State Police thirty-two, Grant County Sheriff's Department had twenty-five, Santa Clara had seven, Baird had twelve, Hurley had five, Adult Probation had two, New Mexico Gaming Fish had one. The detention facility conducted seventeen district court transports, uh, eighteen, uh, Division One magistrate court transports, Division Two had nine in Baird, Silver City Municipal Court had eight, Santa Clara had zero, Baird Municipal Court had one, uh, Hurley Municipal Court had zero. Uh, we had two medical transports, uh, this month, and this reporting period is compared to zero last month. Uh, total number of transports for the reporting period was fifty-three as compared to thirty-eight last month. Um, our utilization and occupancy, uh, offense levels, we had fifteen felonies, sixty-four misdemeanors, uh, probation violations and warrants total ninety-five, uh, which is a total of a hundred and seventy-four. Um, total hours of custody is twenty-nine thousand, eighty-seven. Average length of stay was nine point seven six days, and that's all the information I have, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, um, we've gotten some questions, and I know, I believe Commissioner Hall may have gotten some, on how sometimes we're still having the law enforcement have to get inmates medically cleared before they come in the facility, and there are certain times when they have to do that, and so I've talked with Mike, and he's gonna get with the medical staff we have in the facility, and they're gonna put something together that kinda gives those departments an outline of why we have to get them medically cleared in certain circumstances. We don't have medical there, um, physically, the two people aren't there, they're during the peak times, but in the nighttime they're not, it's through a telemedicine type of thing, and we can't medically clear through that, but then there's certain questions that if the inmate answers them a, a specific way, even though we have medical in the facility, we can't take care of that individual, it's above our medical abilities, so those people have to get medically cleared, and so Mike's gonna work with them and then get with the, the, the local departments and let them know why we do it, um, because I was stopped and told it was every time, and it's not every time, but it, there's certain instances, you know, or if the person's been in an accident and had great trauma done to them, you know, we can't x-ray them and check them out, they need to go to get medically cleared to make sure they don't have any internal bleeding or anything like that, so, he, he's gonna put it all together, so I wanted to let you know, in case you get any phone calls or anything, that there's, uh, I know Silver City's concerned that they thought it was gonna go away completely, and it hasn't, and it's not, I mean, unless we have a full hospital in our jail, we're always gonna have to have certain instances where we send people for medical clearance.
And that's for the safety, the safety of the prisoner and also for the other prisoners and, uh, hostages.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, we're looking at the liability for the taxpayers, I mean, that's, we're here to serve them and, and we manage the money that's given to us to do these operations, and so we're trying to do the best we can, and that's what we're trying to do. So he'll, he'll put something together and get it to them, so it's clear to them why we do it in certain circumstances.
Thank you, Chairman. We remember that Sergeant spoke to the hospital staff, my dad met them, and they asked me the same question, and I also told them, you know, what our protocol was and why we were requiring, uh, for them to go into the hospital and, and, you know, for the hospital emergency room to clear them. Uh, one of the things that worked, that we're faced with detention facility is whenever the officers, whatever, uh, interaction they have with any prisoners that they have when they affect the arrest, um, what we look for is whenever they bring them in, if there's been any signs of, uh, of maybe any, any physical issues that may have, um, you know, happened while they were doing the arrest, we ask the officer, did, was there any force used or anything, because if there was, then we don't know, uh, the extent of that, so we may ask them to go in there and get medical clearance, but if, if, um, if someone comes in there, we obviously don't see, there's no signs of anything, they haven't had any issues or anything, we certainly are gonna ask them to go in there and get a medical clearance, you know, and then our medical staff will look at them, so it's kind of a checks and balances, and we're, uh, we're just making sure that whenever they come in there, because once we accept them, they become ours, and we just wanna make sure that they're, they're, they're okay whenever we accept them in the facility, but I, I will get with all the, the agencies and get that cleared up.
Do you currently have standard operating procedures that outline all this, so it will be, okay, so it'll be easy to relay those to these other departments?
Yes, sir, and then whenever the, uh, when the officers come in, that's one, that's one of the standard questions, is the detention officers ask them, would you guys, uh, there was any issue, that you have any, was there any use of force, was there anything that was applied, uh, to affect the arrest, and, you know, if they tell us yes, or if this individual, I mean, there's, there's so many circumstances that are hard to cover, and we, we, you know, one scenario may be that the individual ingested narcotics before they, they could affect the arrest- the individual ingested narcotics before they could affect the arrest. Well, if we don't know that, those, certainly those symptoms and those issues are going to come up once we accept them in the facility. So we try and acquire as much information from the officers when they come at the time of booking. And then we make a determination at that point whether they need to go. And just the checks and balances, again, like Mr. Sorry said, is just make sure that the inmates and the officers and everybody's covered and we, you know, we make sure that they're okay whenever we accept them in the facility.
Any more questions?
No.
Kiro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Road Department's still just working on the LGAF projects, getting that Alba Road ready for chip ceiling. We will be going back to 10-hour days next week. The shop will still stay on 8-hour days. John signed acceptance letter for the LGAF programs for next year. And they actually gave us $27,000 more than what they have been sold. That's a plus. That's probably made up for the last four or five years that they've taken away from us. And another good note is the price of oil went down about 70 bucks this year. So that's going to help out quite a bit, too. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Are you doing any chip sealing for the smaller communities this year? Have you been contacted?
Yes, we still got Hurley that we weren't able to do last summer because of the monsoon season. We had, I need to get with the mayor over there. I'm going to try and get it done when we do ours. Christie did call me from the city of Baird and ask if we do some chip sealing for her, but I haven't heard back from her. Hers usually is like September before they do theirs. And then the city is actually supposed to do some chip sealing this year, too. And they asked for our help also.
Okay. Any questions for Earl?
I'm really glad that we're still helping the cities with the chip sealing. But we really need to talk to these mayors and tell them, you know what, we need some help in return, especially when it comes to projects. It's, you know, we go out of our way to take care of our municipalities, which is great. And I'm all for it. But when it comes to our county projects, we need their support.
Mike, thanks for your time.
Earl, I just want to thank you personally. I know in the last month you probably think that, hey, Commissioner Hall, you're not the only district that we have. But I think my other two commissioners have been sending business to me. And as a result, I've been passing it down the line. All right. But I do appreciate, you know, what's been nice about it is that, you know, in working with you this past year and few months, I know that I can then talk to John and I know that then you personally go out and you talk to the citizen, you walk with them, you talk to them. And unlike some entities, you're out there, you know, boots on the ground and dealing with it and resolving it. And I want to thank you for all your hard work and your crew.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'd also like to thank you. They're a good bunch of guys, you know, they're able to break whatever schedule we got going to go jump on something that we need to. It's requested from anybody.
My standard comment is that is Commissioner Hall's district, this is his email address. Yes.
I just wanted to bring up to Earl, and I know you do this each year, we're getting ready for the bike race. And so we might want to drive the routes. And because they always call us frantically at the 11th hour to try and get us to fix something. So, and I know you do it. I mean, but we're getting there. We're within a month of the race.
Yeah, I already have. We've got that scheduled for next week. We get those schedules and all those rooms.
Because we, one year they called us and Earl's guys repaved the Snake Hill and the steam was coming off the asphalt as the riders went across it. They were, they were getting out of the way with machines as these guys started riding across it that they gave us no notice to do it. And it just, everything went wrong on it. It seemed like that wasn't, was out of our control. But Earl's guys stuck it out and almost paved all night long to get that ready for the race. So they do a great job.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Earl. Appreciate it.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We did, of course, submit our Colonialist application for Rosedale Road. We'd had to do some updates to the estimates. The new estimates came in by about $50,000 more than two years ago. I, it's kind of puzzling to me. It seems like the, although the price of materials seem to go up, it seems like when we go out to bid for things, the prices have actually gone down for overall construction costs. So I, the initial estimate still seems to be high, but I think that it'll be a good overall project. If we do get funded, we will do as much work as we can. It's only a phased project of the overall project. It'll be about, I think, about $1.6 million total. So hopefully we can get funded for that Rosedale project. We also, I also attended the CDBG workshop about three, almost four weeks ago. I've kind of been out of service attending workshops and trainings. But it was pretty, this workshop was a little bit different than the others in that they were really informative about the process of the CDBG and about the criteria that they're going to hold us to when we're doing applications. And speaking with John, I informed him that we probably don't have a project to submit because of the lack of overall participation from our residences. We have our public meetings, we don't have any participation. So it's difficult to, one of the main things that they have brought to our attention this year is a predetermined project. And while we have to have the project on our ICIP, it cannot be a predetermined project. So it's kind of difficult to be able to adhere to the regulations and not have a predetermined project. So what we're going to try and do this year is we're going to try and start a year in advance. We're going to have public, several public meetings in several different areas, try and get the participation we're supposed to, do some surveys on different smaller communities in the area so that if we do come upon a project that we want to do, we'll have the surveys done, we'll have all those things done. In the past two years, we've used the village of Santa Clara. We tried to assist them in different projects. And they already, they're pre-qualified. So we didn't have to do any surveys. This year, we're going to try and do, try and move our operations up a little bit and not wait for any changes in the program and see if we can't get a good, solid project. What we are going to do, though, is we're going to apply for a planning grant through CDBG to update our comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is, was done in 2004. And so it should have been updated by 2008. So we're several years behind on our comprehensive plan. And so we're going to get that done. I've been doing a little bit of research on our plan and seeing all the things that we've been doing as a community and as Grant County. And we have a lot of updates to make, like for transportation, economic development, or green energy. There's a huge push, lots of changes. So I think that this will be, this will be good overall plan. We're going to incorporate our strategic plan for economic development. And so hopefully we'll come up with a good overall plan. I've been speaking with Todd Miller. I think they're going to try and assist us and try to provide us a good comprehensive plan. So also, I attended some, the International Economic Development Commission training in Washington DC. It was extremely informative. It's a whole different process when you get up there next to the Capitol. They had a lot of speakers from the upper level of the agency. It's not like a lot of the agency heads, USDA, rural development, the head of the economic development department in Washington. It's surprising to me, when you talk to those people and when they give their presentations, what's actually available for rural economic development and rural workforce development. But what some people don't understand is that it's difficult for us to compete because rural, as far as our federal government is, and that's, if you're a rural community, it's 250,000 people or less. So while we have rural communities, we still have really large communities, probably the size of Las Cruces that are actually rural.
Albuquerque and the state of New Mexico rural.
It is. And it's really, it's really shocking. But I think that some of the stuff that we did come away with is that there's a lot of international trade going on. I think that with Luna County and the development of that port down there, there's a lot of monies being available for communities, a lot of international monies, monies coming from overseas. They want to bring their trade and their manufacturing companies into the United States. And for some reason, it's kind of switched. It used to be that they wanted to do all the manufacturing and everything outside the United States. Now they want to bring all that back. And a lot of the investors from other international communities are bringing those monies to the United States. And so I made a lot of good connections over there. Some of the things that we need to do, though, is try and develop our infrastructure, which we've been working on. But another thing that they did when we were there is give us the new avenues to try and get some more grants for infrastructure development. So it's extremely interesting. Just reminds us how far, how far, far back we are in comparison to, you know, larger municipalities and industrial type areas. So also, I just received yesterday that there is a, for transportation planning, the Tiger application for US Department of Transportation. They have $30 million available for transportation planning. We submitted an application, I think, three years ago for the same program. We're going to try and beef it up a little bit and try and get some planning for all our arterials. You can do some regional planning. I think I have a little bit better perspective on what regional planning might entail and maybe be able to change the narrative to be able to meet the criteria that they're asking for. So hopefully we can get some money for planning that respective. Also, the COG board meeting will be on the 24th. I've requested that they change the COG board. They didn't want to change the day, but they did change the time. So instead of at 9 o'clock, they're trying to work with us a little bit. They changed it to 10:30. I tell them that usually the commission meetings don't last as long as the work sessions do. And so they changed the meeting to 10:30. If we need to change the meeting again at a different time, they said that they could, they'd work with us to try and do that. So I know I've been attending because it totally conflicts with the commission meeting. So if Commissioner or John would like to attend, then they can attend.
On what, 24th?
On the 24th. Not a mind attending. I think that I'm pretty much involved in everything they talk about. But I certainly want to, I'm only an alternate. So if you want to attend, they've changed the time for you to attend. But that's all I, that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony? No, I have any questions? All right. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, real quick, I'll start with the DWI program. As you know, they're having what's called teammates today over at the conference center. And that's taking our junior high school students through different segments of some of the choices that they make and bad choices. And I want to thank the Commissioner Cast, the county assessor, the sheriff also for your contributions and helping us out there. I don't miss anybody, I probably will. A lot of the businesses helped us out as well. So I want to thank you for that. And if you get a chance, or the public gets a chance, it's a two-day event, to just go and see what we've put together as far as, you know, putting a plan together for our youth to see, you know, the bad choices that they can make nowadays with all the peer pressures that they go through, whether it be drinking and driving, drugs, prescription drugs, pregnancy, mental health issues. It's real interesting. And so I'm going to try to make it down there sometime today. So with that, that's the DWI. Cola Caminos, we just fill two positions right now. The director and assistant were at a conference the last two days last week. So that's, you know, that's running as usual. What we're trying to do there is, again, we had the DOT come down several months ago and talked about the color of the buses. You know, every bus is white and it just doesn't get people that look to know that that's something separate from, you know, any other buses that are in the community. And that gives people an opportunity to view it and know that that's the transit bus. Or they can get on the bus and go all over town. The other thing they're working on is trying to get together with the other communities where you can go from Lord's Brook to Silver to Daming to Las Cruces. And just trying to put all of those, you know, transits together so that, you know, we can, people that can't, don't have the means to get to Las Cruces or to El Paso, we can't go obviously past the state line. But working on things like that. So they were able to do some networking there at the conference. And so I want to thank them for that. Public Works, it's summertime or spring anyway. We're trying to get the fields ready over at Baton Park. They're doing a good job. I know Commissioner Ramos talked a little bit about getting some steps in there. They're working on that as we speak, to try to get some steps down from one field to at least a consecutive center to the other fields. Working on the sprinkler system over at the courthouse, just making sure now that the heat's could start getting a little bit warmer, we're going to work on the air condition, making sure those are all working in the facilities that we, that we take care of. Also, Justin worked on the emergency plan over at the airport to make sure that that was put in, working, and he got that done. Also working with, you know, different projects. I know Commissioner Ramos, again, had some questions about Baton Park. So we're working on that, on those other issues, whether it be the bathrooms. You know, the problem with the restrooms was is that, you know, they turn the water off and people still break in there. And they use the restroom and there's no water. So the guy's got to go and unclaw all that stuff. So we're trying to look at different ways. One would be obviously a septic tank to put, so they'd be used constantly all year round. We wouldn't have to lock those up. Maybe an air-conditioned heating unit in the big building to have one unit. So we're just working on, trying to keep our facilities up to date. As you know, we're getting close to May where it's going to be a lot of graduation parties at the conference center. So we're making sure that we have the tables, the chairs, the facility is clean. You know, it's going to, because you have not only the university, but you have the three high schools, or at least the two in our area that are going to want, I mean, we're booked solid from here until next year. I mean, people already booked stuff in December, I mean, January 2015. So, you know, we've got these huge craft shows going on, we've got the gun shows going on, we've got graduation parties, birthday parties. The garden show, I think, was a big hit, building garden show that they had. So those are some of the main events we're having. You know, it's tough. I want to give the guys a little pat on the back at Public Works. I know that they got a lot to do and a lot of facilities to work on. We're having guys come in on the weekends and making sure the trash is picked up and, you know, the facility's clean for the next. So you might have a wedding on Saturday night and a birthday party on Sunday afternoon. So we're just trying to keep up with the, you know, the facility and keeping it clean so people can use it. We're a senior program. Can't say much about Terry. He's doing a good job. We just got through working on his budget to try to get that in. So I really don't have much there. I know some of the facilities, we're working on using up some of that, some of those funds to make sure that, whether it be a walk-in freezer or a stove with the proper regulations with the sprinkler systems above the stove units. I know we've talked about that. So Public Works is busy and just trying to keep up with all of the man. So last but not least, fire departments. I think I've got 90% of our volunteer fire departments that took the refresher course and are ready for the fire season. I want to thank Joe, Chief Joe Travis and Jean, Assistant Chief Jean Rodriguez, at Fort Baird yesterday to get an ISO rating of a five. That's only going to help them funding wise in the long run. So, and I want to thank the Fire Marshal Office, too, Randy Varela out of Santa Fe who's come down and assisted us with that. We're working on Whiskey Creek's going to go through another ISO rating. My goal would be to try to, hopefully we can get these a notch down or two. It'd just help their funding out and better equip the firefighters.
Insurance in their area.
That's true. And so when I look at the volunteer fire departments, we had a fire Saturday up in Hanover Creek Road, which is in Fiero, abandoned home. But, you know, homeless trying to get in there and have a warm place to stay and sleep and started a fire. Didn't burn the structure down, but started a a fire. Didn't burn the structure down, but started a grass fire. So I want to thank Santa Rita Fire Department. Their quick response to cleaning that out and so it didn't, you know, get out of hand. Just burned pretty much of the yard. So we were able, they were able to do that. Getting a lot of calls on fire restrictions. Right now, I'm in touch with the, with Gabe O'Keen, which is the staff officer for La Hila, Doug Boykin and Jack Dickie, talking to them constantly on a daily basis of where we at, where we're going. There's a couple of counties in New Mexico, Santa Fe County's in fire restrictions. I think Burn Little County is as well. I just want to encourage people to, you know, don't burn on windy days, period. I mean, we don't have fire restrictions in place, but it doesn't mean that you can't be diligent and making sure, you know, you know, what the weather conditions are. I just, you know, don't want people, we don't have burn permits like the city does. I've been talking to Chief Ben Como. They're not issuing burn permits at this point, which is a good thing, because they go three miles outside the city limits and that ETJ zone. And so, I just want to let the public know that, you know, just don't do it right now. It's so dry, so volatile. I attended the Urban Interface Conference in Towns. And it was kind of odd that they sit there and talk to you about the conditions and the dry conditions. And everybody's looking out the window and it's snowing. So, you know, they got about eighty inches last week, you know, during the conference. So that's a good thing. But it doesn't mean we're out of the woods. And I just want people to understand that, you know, with the volatile conditions we have, with the fine fuels that we have in our southern, western parts of the county, along with, you know, up towards Southfield Creek and all that, it's very dry. And I just want people to understand that we don't want another Pearl Ridge fire like we had in twenty-eleven. I mean, we just want to make sure that people are responsible. And we're gonna do everything in our power and I'm gonna do everything in my power to educate the public. I attended a meeting with the Wind Cannon folks about trying to get our, our Urban Interface Plan, a few reduction areas. I know Commissioner Ramos on the Eco watershed, I've got some information for you all that I attended this conference with. And so, that's all I have unless you have any questions.
As far as fire restrictions, Randy, one of the things I think we probably ought to look at is probably doing the notice of intent to allow the fire management officer and the county manager to implement those as they see fit, rather than have to have the whole commission do it. That way, you wouldn't have to wait two weeks. Once you decide it's time, you guys can get together and do it, rather than come through us. So we probably need to work towards that. Do you have something, John?
Yeah. And Abby and I and Randy have been talking about it. And we were waiting for Randy, just attended his conference up there, the Urban Interface. So we've got information on that. So we were gonna ask you today if that's the route you wanted to go. What we'll do is we'll start preparing for the next meeting to have the ordinance ready and the resolution ready for you to do the notice of intent and go forward with that.
Too much riding by Thursday?
So, so we'll get together with Randy and it'll probably be, if, I mean, I guess, that'll be our goal. If conditions change dramatically, we can do an emergency meeting and put something in place right away by calling an emergency meeting or special meeting to do an emergency ordinance. But right now, we're looking at doing it.
Do you put that on to where that is annual? I mean...
Well, that's what we're looking at doing.
Be on, like, our schedule. Just be on our schedule to have it on the agenda.
Well, I mean, did we do it in January, letting those guys decide?
Well, once we adopt an ordinance, it depends on how you want to do it. If we're really gonna delegate some power to them, you know, they can just do it. You won't have to have it.
Unless the ordinance is repealed, it'll be always in place. You won't have to renew it each year. We can structure it that way. So it's always...
I feel comfortable with current management. We can change that at any time.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry. I got Randy. You got, you're comfortable with Randy?
I know. That's why you wanted two signatures.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Randy, you got two signature, I got that?
You know, and I think, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think what I've tried to do is with my fire experience is reach out to those other entities as well, whether it be the town of Silver City, Gabe O'Keen with State, with the Forest Service and Doug Boykin, Jack Dickie at State Fire. And so, right now, really, the, the only, statewide is the public lands, the state public lands that are in fire restrictions right now, even though they're doing some burn projects up north, which I got to see. But they're the only ones, the state trust land is the only one that's put in statewide.
State land office.
Our state land office is putting fire restrictions. But I'd kind of just, all of us be on the same page. And I think that's where the commission has been over, you know, over the past years, is making sure that it's kind of a domino effect when we look at it. But, but again, if you look at the, you know, northern part of Grant County, they might have more rain than we have down here. So it doesn't mean that because they have moisture up there, that we're getting it down here in a little bit farther south. So, but I think it's, it's one of those things that I look to them as a domino effect to see where we all, where we get with these fire restrictions. I know people are concerned. And I just want people to understand that there are dangers right now, especially with the spring winds that are here.
Now, another thing, I don't know if you have this much to do with this, but every year, we get in a hurry and, because, because of fireworks. So that's another thing that we probably need to, I figured you have that. Okay?
Yes, sir. And I just want to point out, I mean, the reality of the whole situation is, is we really shouldn't have to put burn bans on. People should be able to look outside and realize they shouldn't be burning outside. Because we've all lived here, we've all seen the fires. Oh, I understand.
Well, the problem is, is we haven't really banned burning. What we've told them, yeah, we've banned it. But they still do it anyway. All we're doing is making sure that they're liable. That's it.
And Mr. Chairman, and the people that have called me and asked if they can, you know, burn this or burn slash, obviously, we don't want them burning trash. But, you know, slash and stuff that they, they trim around their homes. I think it's important that, number one, you let your fire district chief know. So he's aware of what's going on. And second, obviously, dispatch, central dispatches, give them a call. Because anytime anybody sees smoke, they're gonna get a thousand calls. And at least that they can relay that back and say, we're aware of it. It's over here. The fire departments have been aware. The FMOs are aware of it. And so, I want to, I don't want to say that I'm, I don't want to make the decisions. But the chiefs in those districts are working together right now as a team to make sure that they understand that there is gonna be some burning if we don't have those restrictions in place. And usually, the chief will tell them that they're, that they're against it. They will not take a vehicle out there. So people usually back off of that. So we're just trying to work together. And it's, it's a long process of educating the public. And, you know, you look at somebody's home that burns down and, you know, you lose your whole identity. It's not like, you know, the East Coast, they have their hurricanes and the West Coast has their floods. And, and we have, I mean, they, the East Coast has their hurricanes and their floods. And the West Coast and southwest New Mexico have their fires. And so, it's no part, it's the same thing, the disaster, whether you have floods, hurricanes or fires. And so, we're in a little different situation here. But, you know, when your house burns down, it pretty much burns your whole identity and who you are. And we want to prevent that as best we can.
Yes, sir. If you could bring the other commissioners up to date, the work that you've been doing on the cliff route.
Well, I'm talking about that, actually talking to you today. We were waiting on a questionnaire from Kim to see what we can get to the public out there in Cliffhalla to see what would work best for some type of route out there. Also, whether we can do it during the school year. I know we talked about that a little bit. There are some kids that live in Silver that go to school in Cliff. And there are some kids in Cliff that go to school here in Silver. So we're just trying to see economically how that would work. There is a bus that goes out there for medical reasons on an annual, on a daily basis. And so, we want to, we want to make sure that if we can get those routes in there feasible economically, then I think it would work. But it's a long process. We are working on the questionnaire to get out to the public out there and see what kind of response we get back. Take that data in and get, give it to Commissioner Hall and some of the people, the leaders out there and see what we can do.
Okay.
Not annually, daily, sorry.
Anything else for Randy?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony's been holding his hand up. He apparently has something he needs to add.
Well, I looked over at Dory and she reminded me that we forgot, we just certainly don't want to leave out the residents out there in Loma Verde. They're still extremely interested on what's going on. We did have an issue with the original map that we were using to identify all of the people that needed to sign. We had a parcel split out there at the end of one of the cul-de-sacs. I guess the first thing we'll attempt to do is try to contact these people and try and get that thing resolved, by the way. Second, I think that to that cul-de-sac, we do have, in a subdivision mix, we do have a restriction of five hundred feet before you have to have a cul-de-sac. Currently, there are no cul-de-sacs that have been developed or constructed out there. So there's not really a cul-de-sac there. But of course, we want to try and do everything according to the regs and standards. So I was kind of brainstorming yesterday. We could potentially have a variance from a subdivision reg in order to take care of that. But I think that what we're gonna try and attempt to do is have everything done in the next couple of weeks and try and get the dedication on the commission meeting to try and get approval for the dedication of the roadway. So that's, that's what our, our goal is. And hopefully, we can get that done.
Currently, you have a road that dead ends into two pieces of property without a cul-de-sac. Is that what you're telling us?
There's no cul-de-sac there at this time.
And those people have no appetite to create a cul-de-sac that you don't know yet?
Matter of fact, I think they're against it.
What is the, the issue? Are we just...
With the cul-de-sac?
Are we unable to get a hold of these people? Or the, I'd call them...
I think your fire management officer has a reason for you.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that's around if you don't have one.
Then that's the reason that they're there. In fact, they've just never been, they've never been developed. They've never been constructed. So.
How did we end up with a split like that?
Oh, it's keeping a fly block. If I take a look at the parcel map that you have right here, you can see where the surveyor has identified the middle of the cul-de-sac and the beginning of the cul-de-sac, the middle of the road as the parcel boundary. And I guess it was in order to meet the criteria for this being a subdivision and the parcel split where they had to have access. And so I think that that was something that Dory, Dory can explain to you.
Does Mr. Benner still own that property?
No.
Oh, you're looking at that.
Styles and Guteau.
Yeah.
You can see it there on the front page of that memo. Dory's giving you the names of the, the split parcel, which is Styles and Guteau.
Yeah. So it's a fly block.
The other yellow parcel over to the right, it's really not an issue because they don't even touch the road.
There's no road.
But...
So.
Yeah, it's kind of strange.
And one thing I spoke with Dory about yesterday is if we run into problems here, the two people that are in front of where that split is have already signed off, that it might be possible, we talked with them about moving that cul-de-sac up to where it ends right at the edge of the back of their properties. And then we kind of, those properties now don't touch the road anymore. No, you're gonna move it up into here.
Dory, what was the problem with the owners, those residents? They just didn't respond? They did not respond?
You barely touched. We get out of those two. I mean, we're gonna look at different things. But right now, that's the issue is, we need everybody to give us, to sign off on the dedication to dedicate it as a public roadway. So we can go in and start going forward with the improvement district. And these two individuals, we haven't gotten signatures from yet, these two properties. And so...
So the red ones, the yellow ones are the ones that we're waiting for?
The two, the two yellow ones right there.
The other yellow ones?
The other yellow one doesn't matter because it doesn't touch the road. So they must just have a driveway or something through.
Neatness.
Yeah. So to get out of that property. But the others, it's those two that has that kind of long side going up it to reach the roadway that proposed cul-de-sac cuts through both of those pieces of property.
I think it's something that Earl and Anthony can present to you a resolution to. Because I know that Earl has been out at the site where he may have looked at where it turned on for days. And so, the residents here, it's just a matter that we haven't heard back from them. Mr. Navarro, who's an adjacent landowner, has signed the dedication. But Mr. Navarro is concerned with the area that would be used to construct.
Also, Mr. Chairman, another, another thing that we've done is to have a cul-de-sac in. If one of the residences is determined enough to get this thing going and the project going, we've always done, we can always do what's called an L-shaped or a K-shaped turnaround on a single property. And we haven't talked to those residences. That's what I'm saying. In the next two weeks, we'll try and resolve the issue and hopefully, make the dedication done. The design is real easy and potentially could be done. Some of that area is kind of flat. We can turn it on and meet the regulations. Mr. Chairman, I've got a thing here. I just wanted to thank Dory for all her work. I know the commission has already done that. It's kind of, it's humbling and it's very educational whenever you have somebody like Dory on your staff and she knows the process. I certainly wouldn't have been able to do that in this amount of time. It's a lot of work and a lot of general knowledge that has to be done. So I'd like to thank her myself.
Anthony, she can retire for the next fifteen, twenty years, okay?
I left my brain at home.
Anything else, Anthony? Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to request a five-minute recess.
Okay. Five-minute request for recess. Take with that. We'll hold them recessed for five minutes. Call back to order the Grant County Work Session for April eighth, two thousand fourteen. We'll continue with county reports. We'll start with the electeds. Kevin, you're filling in for the sheriff today?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the sheriff has family emergencies. So I'm filling in today. And we, I have not had time to pull up our statistics from last month. And I did not get the statistics for Silver. Last Thursday, like the detention center, we got our officers majored for best because our ballistic vests expire this year. So we'll be working on trying to replace all of them. And we're also waiting on the force patrol grant to come back so that we can start putting them for reimbursement there. The sheriff's department's been very busy. And with summer coming on, and we're just gonna start, keep getting busier. Just business as usual.
Any questions for Kevin this minute?
I would just like to point out that the sheriff has met with the town of Silver City on the grant that was in question. And right now, as far as I know, and Kevin can correct me, it's been temporarily suspended until they can come up with some other ways that both can agree on working that. So right now, it is suspended. It's not going on. The funding is there and the sheriff is trying to, he's proposing options to work with some of our officers and different things. And so, he's in discussions with the chief on that. But right now, that is not continuing on.
I got to tell you, Kevin, Earl is the only person that's unhappy that you've done that. Because phone calls on roads went way down and phone calls on Silver City PD being in the county went way up.
Yeah.
They all went down the road.
Well, I told him that Brett was in charge of that.
Because I got more phone calls on that one particular issue than anything I've, since I've been a commissioner.
And I didn't want to enter Walmart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was tough.
Thank you very much.
I also wanted to ask if there's any way we could re-implement that program where you take these people that need to do some community service and clean up the roadways. The roadway between Barrett and Hurley is, oh, it's horrible. It is horrible.
The sheriff's department or the judges?
Well, the sheriff, I guess took control of that.
We were doing a probation office. And we did four different operations where we had kids out there that were on probation, picking up gardens. And myself and the sheriff facilitated that. And we're out there with the kids. We are working on doing that again.
Great. That's a great program. Hope we can implement that. And I mean, the ideal situation would be to use our prisoners. But I believe they have to be sentenced in that.
They're just, they're unconstitutional. It's a good sentence.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's, let's talk to our judge and see if we can get him sentenced to that.
I just have one quick thing, Kevin. You know, on the flashing lights...
You know, on the flashing lights, I know I'm sorry for bringing that up. Please be silver. But anyway, have you been able to increase any kind of patrols out on Tottistan?
Yes, we have.
Good. Thank you very much.
So now you're going to get phone calls about there's too much sheriff deputies on Tottistan Road.
You wanted it.
Actually, I throw up into a couple, so that's good. We need them up there.
Okay. Don't ask if you don't want it, right?
That's right. Please, Steve?
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, last week, I attended our treasurer's affiliate legislative strategic planning meeting, and we had Property Tax Division, we had the top five of the six top officials from Property Tax Division there. We also had a representative from the Assessors' affiliate, and we were trying to work out the differences in the legislation that stalled this past session that we were trying to get. There seems to be a little bit of a misunderstanding from Property Tax Division of what our intent was in trying to get those properties that have two years or less delinquent to revert back to the county. And it was more in the wording that they were objecting to than the actual, what would happen. So we had quite a lengthy discussion about that, and we also have agreed that we will be supporting the Assessors' affiliate in the requests that they're trying to present for this coming session. So we're making quite a bit of headway on that, so. And then I'd like to recognize and acknowledge my staff for the hard work that they've been doing this past month. We sent out nine hundred and twenty-six account notices on the delinquencies. Out of the twenty-two thousand five hundred accounts that we have, that represents a four percent delinquency. So, you know, it's, while it's good statistically, it's still, they're still out there, so. We, out of those nine hundred and twenty-six accounts, it represents about eight hundred and twenty taxpayers because of multiple accounts that people have. We still had seventy return notices because of the address changes or address just not being accurate. We've been working with the Assessors' office, the CATS, and because of the previous, you know, on the big list, the newspapers are totally against doing any PSA, and we just don't have the money to do that full-page ad. But both newspapers are taking it under advisement. Since we only have those seventy names on the delinquent list, they say they might be able to do a PSA, but would like to request if they can't do it as a PSA, maybe we can run a small ad to list those. The issue with most of those is those are long-term delinquents that we have from two thousand and four and to two thousand and thirteen. Most of those are on the longer-term delinquent list, which was also discussed with Property Tax Division as to why are we having property tax, properties fall off the, in other words, if you don't collect a property tax bill within ten years, statute says it's considered paid, so we can't. And we just had about eighty thousand dollars roll off for the two thousand and three tax year that were not, were not collected. And that was part of the discussion is why has Property Tax Division not sold those properties? And so those are issues that we're, we're trying to deal with. But as you can see, by those notices, the report I gave you, we had a fifty-one thousand dollar increase from the prior month's collections. So we collected eighty-six thousand dollars for the county, the county's portion of it. But it's still, you know, small, small amounts. We did have another transfer in March from the investment account to the general fund, which has just barely kept us above the water. But other than that, that's all we have to...
When you do the notices, don't forget Grand County Beak.
Yes.
Okay. We'll send you the list. Any questions for Steve?
No.
Mary?
Chairman, commissioners, now that I've sent out the notices of value, April first, Eric Morales, my chief deputy, and I would like to invite the property owners to a meeting that we are holding next Monday from twelve to one and five-thirty to six-thirty. The topics to be covered are reading and understanding the notice evaluations and introduction to protesting your evaluation. The date and times will also be published this Thursday in the Grand County Beak. Eric and I would like to also thank our staff for their dedication and hard work as appraisers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, if I had one phone call on those, so, and I directed them to you, I hope they called. Any questions for Mary? No? Okay. Well, chairman and commissioners, just have a couple of dates as far as elections go. We're already here. May sixth, absentee voting begins in our office, or early absentee begins in our office. Along with absentee voting, where we can send those ballots out to you. Voter registration closes on that day, so if you need to make any changes or need to register to vote for this election, that's the last day that you can do that. Absentee voting is a application process, so applications can be picked up in our office. You can go to the website, print one out there and mail it in, or you can call our office and we can send you an application to whatever address you need that to. Early voting begins May seventeenth at our Barrett location, which is a Saturday. That'll run Tuesday through Saturday till early voting ends at the end of the month of May. So I'll give more dates here at the next meeting, but those, just those first few ones, you know, keep it simple for this first time. And of course, we'll have voter convenience centers on Election Day as well. So if you have any questions, call our office, five seven four zero zero four two. If you have anything else, sit for me. Anything for Rob?
I promise I won't tear up your biggest voter convenience center this year. We, we started construction on the...
This year.
This year.
No promises in two years. Anything else for Rob?
Thanks, Rob. Do a great job. Appreciate you.
John?
One other question, though. We're going to, a while back, we talked about trying to start doing electronic agendas and meeting packets. Actually, have a web demonstration today at two o'clock, Group PDS. We've worked with them for a long time with the clerk's office. They do all the scanning and document imaging over there. They've just partnered up with a group and come up with a new product for, it's a electronic agenda where items are submitted, it builds the agenda, it's routed for approvals for the items to be on. And so they're going to have a demonstration for me at two o'clock today. I was going to try and have Abby in there and Demisia in there so we can see what the product is. I think it's going to be worthwhile to look at. It's a lower-priced alternative than we've seen in the past, and so they'll give us some more pricing options on it today. But it's something that I think would benefit us as we, we've talked about it, we've gotten the commissioners iPads that you'll be able to view it on there. We've also talked about having monitors where maybe it's controlled through the meeting, the documents are displayed in front of you. Different options, but this will be kind of the start where it'll make it easier for us to submit. And also archive our whole packets electronically. It's all hosted on their website, but we can have a link from our website to those packets so people would be able to look it up, which would help out because right now, your process is, is you go to the clerk's office and try and find a document, and you've got to go look in the different files that he has to find that document you're looking for, a resolution or minutes to a meeting or something. And so this would actually make that whole packet electronic and help hopefully ease some of the burden of people coming in trying to look at a document on his side, make it easier for them, make it easier for us, easier for the commissioners to get the information in a timely fashion for the meetings. So we'll...
Same one, we got an email on, did you guys get an email? I got an email on someone's listening, trying to sell their product. I don't know if it's the same one or not.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. This was PDS. Professional documents.
PDS is a company that's at all the association county meetings and...
Yeah. No, and they've, we've worked with them for, I don't know how long they've had an agreement with the clerks. Yeah.
We brought in that first imaging system.
So it's been...
I received an email on that.
Yeah. Gave us kind of clarity like eighteen.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
So, so we've worked with them quite a while. So they're going to present this to us. It's a new, like I said, a brand-new partner they've gotten with so they can bring this option to us. And it's something we've been kind of looking at and just haven't been able to find anything that's really works good for us, or if we find something we like, it's usually way out of our price range and not affordable to us. And so they promised that this is something that we really liked, the technology as well as the price on it. So I'll let you know more on that Thursday if we hear.
I just have a question. This morning, when we turned on our computers, everything came up, says you are no longer protected. All our computers are, have the Windows XP on them, and, I mean, they're fairly old or whatever. I don't know.
They're protected. Well, supported, yes.
XP is protected, there's no security issues on the computers. It's that Microsoft has chosen not to support XP anymore, and we are for the budget. Angela's going around and looking at replacing the XP boxes in this budget. So it doesn't...
Every computer in the office.
Yeah, we're already replacing Ted's, and so there's some, and like I said, she's looking at them. Alfred should be already upgraded to seven because it was a box that was bought later. So I'll have her look at that because she was thinking his was on seven already. And so, yeah, there's no issues with it security wise.
We need a survey and...
Yeah. We are for the budget. Angela's already performing that to get those machines upgraded in this current budget. She's going to give me a whole package that she needs for the IT infrastructure, which will include computers. And speaking of budget, that's where we're at. It's budget time. What we've done is we've been waiting for March to get through. So we will, now Linda and I will start sending some information out to the directors and electeds and start meeting with them. We plan on having a budget meeting at the next commission work session. Will be a first budget meeting. Hopefully, we can, and then go from that budget meeting to go in presenting the budget to the commission in the first May meeting. So that gives us time to push it up by June first, the preliminary. I'll get with Mary and look at what we think we'll be at for taxes. She usually can give me a good estimate on where she thinks, because she sent out her valuations, what kind of new value it's before protests, of course. That's kind of the problem with the whole scheduling. The state makes us do our budgets, but they don't give us what our tax rates will be until September, and we need our tax rates to know how much tax we're going to collect. So we usually forecast very conservative, and Mary can run the yield control formula, and I think last year, she was right on the nose on what they did. And so that's, she's got that down really good, so she can give me a good true number for final budget where we think we'll be. So that's what we'll be doing right now. I've prepared a report yesterday in the system that I'm, just want to check before I give to the commissioners. And what it does is it compares the last four years' budgets to this, or last four years' actual spending to this year's budget. So the commissioners can see kind of where our numbers were and why, when we do our budgets, why we come up with our numbers based on those historic dollars. So I will get that out to you. I just wanted to check it. I just made it last night, and I wanted to check it and make sure everything came in okay before I give it to you. But that's kind of where we'll be right now. Pilt was funded this year. We don't know if it'll be funded next year. There's the push to get it funded again. We'll be looking, I mean, we're going to try, probably forecast very conservatively again, just not knowing. I mean, we're coming out of a downturned economy, but I think we're still, we can't just jump out and start doing that. We've got some increases for the employees coming July first, based on the union contract that we have. So there'll be, that's right now, currently, if there's no changes, it's one percent for some of the employees, one and a half for the law enforcement. So that's, that'll be there. We'll budget that in, of course. And then we're looking further down the road. The detention center, I've been talking with Mike, I mean, that's one of our, the detention center and the sheriff's office are one of our most, I guess, where we have our most liability, and so that's why we've been looking at those. We've tried this training position out, so we might try and put that in the budget as a permanent position this year because it seems to be working very well. Mike has done a great job with this, well, the employees there. We, I think it's, in my eyes, I mean, this isn't going back and looking at it, but it looks like it's reduced our liabilities in there just because of the, we're really on top of all the training. We were always doing training, but now we're really tracking it. We're doing extra training, we're bringing trainers in. So I think it's really helping us there, so it's worth it to keep that position. So we'll be talking about that with him going forward. The sheriff has already asked me about more vehicles. Unfortunately, they wear these things out in a few years because of the size of the county and the residents being spread everywhere. So we'll be looking at if we can possibly replace some sheriff's vehicles again with him, working with him to hopefully buy the equipment for them because that's about half the cost of a vehicle is equipment, so. And we'll, but those are the main things we're going to look at, probably try not to increase expenditures too much, except for in those areas where we've seen, like I said, those benefits, and we can reduce other costs by increasing, by buying something new like the cars, we decrease our maintenance costs. So we'll be getting with the commissioners to see if there's special projects we want to make sure that are included in there. And be going over it with you as we build the budget.
What's the timeline on that?
The preliminary budget has to be in by June first. The final budget is July thirty-first. And we have to have one budget hearing in between each, and so that's why we were thinking of having the budget hearing on next work session. We've already received some outside letters. Typically, what we have done in the past is try and do the preliminary budget based on inside funding, and then we work on funding those outside requests as we go into the final budget, just because we have to take care of our own internal services first before we try and go outside to create more. So I know Mrs. Bagay has already come to the commission, said she's going to request more than she has in the past. We've gotten the request from the extension office that they are good with keeping their funding the same, but then they've also given us some options. If we could increase their funding, they would be able to hire another, not agent, but I don't know if it's called an agent, for the extension to work with the kids, to work with the 4H and all that. And so that's one option they've given us, but it's about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Have they been cut from the past?
Yeah, we, we used to fund them at a higher level, but last year, we cut back on our funding to the extension service because of the state chose to take away funding from this area when our agent was empty, the agent's position was empty, they chose not to fund it in their reduction. And so we said, well, if you're going to cut back funding on your own people, then we're going to cut back our funding back to what you requested. We'd always given them more than they had requested. Now that they have an agent in place and he's doing really good, the program's growing again, they've asked if we would consider increasing our funding again so that they could do more with the kids than they were in the past. So those are things that we're getting. So we will, like I said, put some together, work with the commissioners, work with the electeds and directors in the next couple of weeks, and prepare for that meeting on that next work session to have the public hearing and get some more direction from the commissioners on where you want to go as we get closer to the preliminary and final budgets. That's...
That's it. Any questions for John? No? Anything?
I'm going to reserve mine for Thursday. I'm going to, just to my everyone, but there's in class, April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, we're having Arizona Water Settlement public meeting, and Thursday, I'll go through the agenda on that. But I just, I'd like for everyone to put that on their calendar. Going to be running from about four PM in the afternoon until nine, and we'll have food and a lot of information.
Well, I just wanna thank everyone for running the county as well as you do, I mean, every department and I know there's been specific people put out there, but everything's been running really well, so we really do appreciate that as a commission. I did wanna inform the commission that I've been approached by Mayor Bausch from Santa Clara. He is wanting to see if we would support him in having a sewer plant authority, or put an authority over the plant in Baird. He really feels that he wants to be able to use some of that water that's coming out of the sewer system as well, I think, as the county does. And being that our residents, as well as Baird's, Hanovers and Hurley's are using it, I think everyone needs to start getting their fair share. That's one of the issues that he brought up and I told him that I, as one commissioner, do support that, but, you know, we're gonna have to work on this thing together. He does have the support of the town of Hurley and he's just seeking support from the other entities at this point. Wanted to ask Mr. Buederis if he can please get a GIS person, you talked to the Forest Service GIS department, see what information they need for us. They're gonna start putting together information for our Echo Watershed, Watershed Group and the quicker we combine this information, the quicker we can start putting in for grants, federal grants to help our local Forest Service personnel either tram or help us with the watershed. So that's where we're at with our Echo Watershed Group and I believe that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have nothing today, so I think unless somebody has seconds, we'll call a adjournment.
Well, yeah.
We do have an executive session, okay. So at this time we'll recess and come back to order in the executive session as Rob and I do, yeah, second. All those in favor, say "Hi."
Hi.
Rob, you wanna do roll call?
Commissioner, Rob, I'm sure... Are you aware that you will be entering into executive session? Yes, I am. Chairman Castor, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you will be entering into...
I am.